There are also, he is also online. All right, call to order, we have the disclosure of any voting conflicts during a regular meeting. We will... Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioners, do y'all have any voting conflicts at this time?
No conflict.
None, sir.
Do we have any, no, no voting conflicts? Clerk, do we have any presentation or proclamations?
Not at this time, sir.
This is our workshop.
This is our workshop, commission workshop on February 4th, 2025.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our consent agenda. And approval minutes of January 7th, approval minutes of February 4th. Mr. Manager, is there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda?
No additions or, or deletions.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to our resolutions. Resolution 042025. City Clerk, would you please read the resolution?
A resolution of the City of South, City, City Commission of South Bay, Florida approving and adopting the 2024 Revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategy Strategic Plan, Providing for Adoption of Representation Providing for Transmittal Providing for Effective Date.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager Camel.
Yes, the LMS, um, approved and adopted the 2024 Revised LMS. The City of South Bay Commission hereby approves and adopts 2024 Revised Local Mitigation Strategy Plan in its entirety. As revised, the LMS Steering Committee has submitted to the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners, the Florida Division of Emergency Management, and Federal Emergency Management Agency. Very specifically to the City of South Bay, what the local mitigation strategy provide is to assist us in, one, being on the list for local mitigation funding. Staff is recommending approval of said resolution. This, this funding helps us with, excuse me, not funding. This plan helps the City of South Bay to acquire funding for stormwater mitigation projects. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, City Manager Camel. Now it's, now it's time for discussion, and the Commissioner having a discussion for Resolution 042025.
I plan to support the resolution at our regular meeting because it provides the basis for justifying and solicitation and use of local, state, and federal funding sources to support hazardous mitigation projects and initiatives. Reading from the summary that I see, I plan to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Commissioner King?
None.
Thank you, Commissioner King. I have none as well. Okay, moving right along.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if you, if you, if I may?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, City Manager.
It, I, I did not fully hear Commissioner Barry's question, so I'm not able to respond to the question.
No, she was just making a statement saying that she will support the resolution.
Okay, thank you, sir.
And I will move to support at the regular meeting. Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 052025. City Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
Resolution of the City Commission of South Bay, Florida, re-adopting and re-ratifying the existing distribution formula for six, six cents local option fuel tax, providing for adoption of representation, providing for an effective...
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager Camel.
Uh, Vice Mayor, Commission, and Mayor, the local option gas tax, that's six percent. We are currently receiving six percent local option gas tax in Assistant City of South Bay with some of our potholes and projects, receiving funding to support in that space. Staff is recommending approval of said ordinance in order for us to re-engage the county to re-authorize the local, the six percent local option gas tax so that the City of South Bay, we are able to continue receiving those dollars. The county must receive fifty-one percent of the city within the municipality, within the county, in order to continue moving forward with this thirty-year term interlocal agreement. Staff recommends approval of said resolution, of said resolution and interlocal agreement.
Thank you, City Manager Camel. Any Commissioners with any follow-up discussion or questions regarding this resolution?
Uh, to the manager and Mr. Sodeman, what amount did we receive during the 2023 budget cycle? And what do we project receiving, once this is approved, for the '25 cycle? What amount?
I know I don't have those numbers. If you would, Commissioner Barry, Mr. Massey is able to, during the, before we come into the meeting for the seven o'clock session, we can pull that local option gas tax and what was received in order to answer that question fully.
And all of those funds, those funds were used for our infrastructure, roads and sidewalks, correct?
Those funds are used for roads repairs, yes. Street and roads.
Okay. Thank you. I'll wait to hear the amount. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
I plan to support this as well, once I know the amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, the question was asked as to what we project to receive in 2025, in the upcoming years. This is all contingent upon receiving, uh, the county renewing, receiving the fifty-one percent of the municipalities within the county and the local option gas tax being renewed. So if it's not renewed, then of course, there is nothing for us to levy.
Okay. And this is according to the resolution. This is a thirty-year term, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
As you stated. County Code, Chapter Seventeen, Article One, yes. Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry.
Mr. Massey, if you could pull the, uh, if you could, Mr. Massey, pull the budget book. Um, look up, get the local option gas tax and provide that line item to the Commission, please.
Thank you, City Manager Camel. Okay, moving right along. We have ordinance, at this time, we don't have any ordinance that we're gonna go over. Uh, Rose and White Elementary.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I can, um, I know during the prior commission meeting, we spoke about those two ordinances that were gonna come back to the Commission. However, I, those items are not before the Commission. They will come back to the Commission at your February eighteenth meeting. They are not before you because there was a minor adjustment regarding parking and some site plan. I mean, it wasn't significant to the point where we needed to do a reading over. It, it was insignificant, however, we are bringing that, just a little minor adjustment, bring those back to the Commission for second reading with all of the pertinent backup on February the eighteenth. That is why you don't have those items before you today.
Thank you, City Manager Camel. So what we have to put that in the minutes during the regular city meeting, meeting?
No, I just wanted to share it with the Commission, um, just share it with the Commission for information since I had everyone present.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Rose and White Elementary School report. Hopefully, Principal Hightower will be here. If not, then I will give our school report, elementary school report. Finance report, Commissioner Barry.
Thank you. Vice Mayor McKelvin, I have prepared at link that Mr. Sodeman and I, well, I will make a motion at the regular meeting to approve the accounts payable report for December 3rd, 2024, and January 7th, 2025. I will make a motion at the regular meeting. At those meeting, I ask the table, Mr. Sodeman and I have gone through those reports at link. We have pulled documents. And yes, so at the regular meeting, I will make a motion to approve accounts payable for December 3rd, 2024, and January 7th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry, for that finance report. City Clerk's report.
Uh, yes, Vice Mayor, I, we have Palm Beach Day, March 4th through the 5th in Tallahassee, NLC City Conference, which will be in Washington DC, March 8th through the 12th. And all registration and hotel arrangements have been completed for the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Manager report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, the, um, Vice Mayor, I do apologize, sir. Just, I'm gonna speak very candidly as to what was accomplished here today in Washington DC regarding, one, specifically to the City of South Bay. We made application last year around the same time for the one million dollars for our Tanna Park project through, uh, Congresswoman McCormick's office for the appropriations request. And we learned today that we should, if the government approves a budget in March, but no later than April, our one million dollars should move forward. However, again, that is all contingent on the budget of the federal government approving a budget. Also, also be aware that community development block grants are part of the, um, larger conversation as well. And I know we are poised in South Bay to receive community development block grant dollars for our code enforcement officer support at our code enforcement department. And so just know that is also just a conversation that's taking place. And I'm also wanting to share with that code enforcement piece, I will, we will bring in to the Commission at your February eighteenth meeting, should this person accept the offer, our code enforcement officer, uh, code compliance officer to the Commission, so you all could be aware as to who that person is that's gonna, that has gone through. If they accept the offer to, uh, this, from the City of South Bay, and we'll introduce a person to you at the February eighteenth meeting. No other report, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager Camel. Commissioner Barry.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor McKelvin, directed to the manager. What percentage are we waiting for? Is this, we're talking about state and federal or just state funding?
The percentage that, uh, we received, there's about thirty-three thousand to thirty-five thousand dollars that we received from Palm Beach County. If your question is regarding CDB, Community Development Block Grant Dollars?
Yes.
We are receiving approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, from Palm Beach County to support our code enforcement efforts. Our code enforcement is approximately a hundred, um, ninety to a hundred thousand dollars within that department alone for all of the service, for the entire budget.
For the county, this is just for the county, right? County and...
The county is only supporting our total budget approximately thirty-three percent.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. Now...
Yes, ma'am.
Presently, Vice Mayor McKelvin, to the manager. On staff, who is the code enforcement interim person? Or we, there is no code enforcement interim individual, meaning staff? A staff member has not, is not designated to perform that task at this time, is that correct?
That is, that is, that is correct.
So how are we, okay, we have... Guide me through this process. Habitat for Humanity, as I tour the neighborhood, there are, um, we have housing, new housing. Who, who's doing the code enforcement for that, through the county?
No, ma'am, that is through us. You're, you're, it is, that's the building department. That's not code enforcement. The building official and our inspectors are performing the services required to, for those homes to go vertical.
Yes, yes, yes.
And that's a separate, um, a whole separate job in itself.
Thank you for that clarity. I just wanted to make sure that, uh, we are on task and we have staff performing the task as it relates to new housing in the city. There is some housing, there is housing, I think a single, single-family duplex, whatever, on Southwest 12th Avenue. That project has halted. So what, what's the status of that at this time in terms of building inspection, et cetera? Southwest 12th Avenue at the end?
Yes, ma'am, I'm familiar with the project, um, in question. That is, that is, that is the builder's thing. They have, um, they pull their permit. They can work until they are not able to.
Okay.
And as their building permit expires, if there's no work taking place or no permit, inspections called, that building permit lasts a hundred and eighty days. If they get down to the hundred and seventy-ninth day and they were to call the city and ask for an extension and they grant, I mean, they provide enough details as to why we should grant an extension. Typically, that extension is granted.
But that project has, there's a halt. It's a pause. There is a pause in that, uh, on that construction site, correct?
There is a pause, there is a pause on the construction site, but there are some things happening in the background that the builder is doing and having to get done, um, with, on their side. And we are aware of those things that's out of their control. And we are working with the builder in that aspect. Now, that is not a developer. That is a, that is a private home being constructed by that private individual.
Thank you for the update. That's all the information I needed this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Thank you, City Manager Camel. City Attorney, report?
No report, Mr. Vice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, City Attorney. Um, for the future agenda items and, uh, Commissioner comments for the good of the order, we would do that at the regular city commission meeting.
Excellent, excellent.
Anything good for the good of the order, but, any other Commissioners? If not, um, we are adjourned. Can I have a motion in a second?
Second.
Workshop is adjourned.
And we will go into our regular meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight and serving as our, serving with us at our commissioning. We'd like to call this meeting to order at seven o'clock on February the fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner King.
Present.
Commissioner Pope.
Present.
Commissioner Barry.
Thank you. And Commissioner Pope, thank you so much for what you. And I know you asked for the, but I had to say this because it's been a year, right?
It has been.
It has been a year, but I thank you so much. I'm present. All right.
Vice Mayor McElvin.
Present. Thank you, Commissioner Barry. We all stand will have our prayer by Commissioner Pope. And the pledge allegiance following that.
Father God, we thank you for who you are, for what you has done, how you have been so gracious to our community. God, we ask you to bless us tonight as we go into this commission meeting. But God, the thoughts of our minds, let us do business according to God's will to benefit these precious residents, stakeholders, and all here in the city of South Bay. Bless each of us on this day. Bless our mayor, manager, get him a safe travel back to South Florida. We ask these blessings in your son Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, which never ceases to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pope, for that wonderful prayer.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving along the agenda, is there any, um, the closure voting conflict? Madam Clerk, will you? Check and see if there are any voting conflicts.
I have really very sore. You guys have any voting conflicts?
Commissioner King, any voting conflicts?
None, sir.
Commissioner Pope?
None, sir.
Commissioner Barry?
No conflict.
I have none as well. City Clerk, do we have any presentation to proclaim?
No, sir.
Okay, moving right along. What about any public want to address the commission?
Yes, we have two. Uh, the first one is George Sanford. You may have to turn the mic on.
Good night. My name is George Sanford, two twenty five South West State Avenue, South Bay, Florida, three three four nine three. I'm here for, not really as a lesson, but I need to ask a couple of questions about the Brady property. I know we had a lot of presentations before people come. Say what they want to do and what they're going to do, but to be signed on that Brady property.
Can you, what property?
The Brady property, the one by under Marizan Station on U S twenty seven.
Park of Commerce.
Oh, the Park of Commerce.
The Park of Commerce.
Oh, oh, the Park of Commerce.
It's still the Brady property for us.
Okay, so as, as of right now as we stand, um, correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, but we have some vendors coming in to actually bid on the property. It just hasn't went out for RFQ right now, but we have some people looking to that property. And we don't know if we want to sell it as the whole eighty eight acres or if we want to break it up in parcels as of right now. But the City Manager Campbell, he can probably go more into depth with that.
See the manager.
Mister, Mister Vice Mayor, you're absolutely correct, um, is what you stated. If Mister Sanford could provide a, I can give him a call and we can schedule a time to answer his question in more detail. If he needs more details, well, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, I'll do that because it was a couple of questions I had from a couple of citizens. Who would answer them, but I'll be talking to you first, then I'll reach back out to the citizens.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanford.
Thank you.
City Clerk, have any more?
Yes, we do, sir. We have one more. Ms. Annie Eiffel.
Ms. Annie Eiffel.
All right, good evening, Vice Mayor, Commission, City Manager, residents of South Bay, good evening. Uh, my name is Annie Eiffel with Healthier Glades. I just wanted to share a couple of announcements. The first announcement that I have is, um, Healthier Glades is collaborating with community partners of South Florida to host a housing fair. And people are probably thinking, housing fair in this climate, but you know what? We do have some residents that are looking for trying to get homes. And so what we're trying to do is, um, I'm working with my fiscal agent to try to bring a housing fair here in the Glades where we could provide workshops, information sessions on pre-purchase, post-purchase, lending. Um, another topic that we're also bringing is home maintenance, how to keep your homes maintained. Because if you don't maintain your homes, then it could result in a, a, a very big bill. And then the other thing is for our seasoned residents who have homes, what is your plan for your homes in the event that you transition? We've seen a lot of folks transition in the past couple of weeks. And I think it's forcing some conversations with some family members that they didn't plan on having, but they're not having to have because they didn't have that conversation before. So we'll do a, a workshop on heirs' property. How to keep your home in the family to continue that generational wealth that can be transferred, you know, transferred from generation to generation. And this is going to be on February twenty second at West Tech from nine to two. So we'll start off, we'll have, um, banks, we'll have lenders, loan officers that, that'll be there if you're in that process. Now, if you're not ready to buy, but you're renting, we also know in our community it's a challenge to find affordable renting options. We will have some apartment communities that will be there as well to, um, uh, provide informational resources. We also going to have, um, Legal Aid Society. So if you're having some issues with, um, your, your landlord, you can have, you can ask those questions as well. Um, there's no cost to this event. This event is free. And for the community, so I'll leave some flyers in the back.
Yes.
Uh, the other thing I want to also share is, um, Healthy Glaze is kicking off our three sixty-five Let's Move campaign. And what we're trying to do is try to get, uh, residents active and, um, uh, start doing exercise. So we have started a yoga class with Bridges at Belgrade, but you could also join virtually via Zoom. And so what I'll do is I'll send that to the clerk that can share out with everyone, but we're doing it every Tuesday and Thursday at four o'clock. And, uh, I know with some of you want me to talk about the, uh, oratorical.
Please.
Okay, so for those who don't know, I did, um, sir, by request of Miss Barry, I, I did serve as the judge for the, um, oratorical contest, and I've done it now for the past three years. And I must say, the oratorical contest is getting better and better every year, particularly with our younger kids. I mean, they're blowing the older kids out the park. So whatever you're doing, still continue to do it. It's a blessing that this, um, program has been in our community for so, such a long time. And we're getting a chance to see those kids showcase their talents in each of the three cities.
Yes.
And so that's a good thing too as well. And then for those who don't know, if you're watching The Voice, we have a resident from Pahokee who is performing on The Voice. So if we can, we want to give that young man some support as well. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eiffel.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Thank you so much, Ms. Eiffel, for that wonderful report. We're going to go right into the consent agenda. Uh, can I have approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda for the City Minutes of January seventh and approval of the February fourth City Minutes. Could I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion, Barry, second.
Motion by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Pope. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Pope.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McElvin.
Yes. It approves by all the commissioners, four to zero. Okay, moving right along to resolution zero four, two thousand and twenty five. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution of the City Commission of South Bay, Florida approving and adopting the two thousand and twenty four revised Palm Beach County Local Mitigation Strategic Plan, providing for adoption of representation, providing for transmittal, providing for an effective date.
City Manager Campbell.
The resident, ooh, the local mitigation strategy assists the city in South Bay with, uh, a part of Palm County's mitigation plan. That has recommended approval of resolution zero four, two thousand and twenty five. And a very specific project is a part of the southeast section stormwater, um, funding, stormwater project that's currently under construction in the area. Being on the strategy, the LMS plan assisted us in receiving funding from, um, the state of Florida to construct that project. Staff recommended approval.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Can I have a motion and a, and a second?
I move to approve resolution oh four, two thousand and twenty five.
Second.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Barry, second by Commissioner Pope. In the discussion, a resolution zero four, two thousand and twenty five.
Just a quick correction, zero five. So zero five, two thousand and twenty five.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Yep, I say zero four, two thousand and twenty five.
The local mitigation strategy according to the agenda, I'm not sure who was speaking. I do apologize. If that's the first one, zero four, two thousand and twenty five, and zero five, two thousand and twenty five is the local option.
Fuel tax.
Fuel tax.
Thank you.
Oh, all right. That's Madam Attorney. I do apologize, Madam Attorney.
So, uh, are we in order?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any commission is up for discussion. Here and now, Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Pope.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McElvin.
Yes, passes four to zero. I'm sorry, Mister Mayor, do we vote? Oh, okay. Do you have anything on this resolution, Mister Mayor?
Uh, no, I do not, sir. Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm, I didn't acknowledge you. I'm sorry. But we have Mister Mayor.
Not a problem, sir.
Yes, sir. We have Mister Mayor on the phone as well. Um, moving on to resolution zero five, two thousand and twenty five. Madam Clerk, can you read for the record?
A resolution of the City Commission of South Bay, Florida, re-adopting and ratifying the existing distribution formula for six, six cent local option fuel tax providing for adoption, for representation, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. City Manager Campbell.
I've asked, oh, Mister.
I'm sorry.
Okay, uh, Mister Manager, I've asked Mister Sodeman if he could give us an update regarding the figures. And thank you, Mister Manager.
So if I could, uh, that outlined by the chair, far two, we could have, this is a thirty year term ordinance, um, during the resident, during the workshop, Commissioner Barry asked a question, um, regarding the dollars that have been levied over a time period. Mister Massey has sent four of those numbers and he is going to come and provide an update to the commission regarding what that six cents look like for the city of South Bay for our budget. Mister Massey, would you provide those numbers to the commission at this time, please, to the commission and the public?
Thank you, Mister Massey.
Mister Massey is our finance director. Visit his office anytime.
All right. For the local, for the local option gas tax for the fiscal year two, nine thirty twenty four, city almost received seventy nine thousand. And for the half a sense, the local option gas tax, city almost received thirty six thousand. And for the current fiscal year, the city budgeted to eighty six thousand five hundred. And for the half a cents, local option gas tax, city budgeted thirty nine thousand five hundred.
All right. And you also indicated that we receive these funding, well, this two months, three months out.
We, for the current fiscal year, we only received two months.
Just two months, all right.
For the month of October and November, it's almost thirteen thousand three hundred for the first local option gas and the sixty three hundred for half a cents local option gas, the other portion, man.
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Manager, Mister Massey. Commissioner Pope?
Yes, uh, my question for the City Manager, uh, what type, what tangibles, uh, what line items are we able to utilize this, um, this tax, uh, monies for a hazard being spent within the city?
Streets and roads.
Spent on, uh, those dollars are only set aside for, uh, infrastructure, roads and streets. So we do put those dollars, the revenue dollars into our street expenditure line item.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. And.
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Please make a note that some of the repairs that we see now were utilized.
Using those dollars, yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Manager.
Thank you, Mister Manager.
Yes, thank you. You're welcome.
Ready to move on? All right, so motion, we have a motion and we have a second. City Clerk, can you call for the roll?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Pope.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry. Vice Mayor McElvin.
Yes. Mayor Collins, do you have anything on this resolution, Mayor Collins, that you would like to discuss?
Uh, no, no, sir. Uh, the City Manager informed me on all the action and reference to that resolution, sir. And thank you all.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. All right, moving right along. Um, the ordinance we will have, we don't have an ordinance tonight that we will be, uh, visiting. So we'll move right along to the Rosenwald Elementary School report. Uh, I don't see Principal Hightower in the audience. So I would just like to, um, give a brief, um, report on Rosenwald Elementary School. Uh, we're taking twenty-two students to Washington, D.C. in the morning. Um, we'll be flying out around five o'clock in the morning. Uh, we'll be there from Wednesday all the way to Saturday morning. So please keep us in your prayers. Um, we'll be partnering up with Pioneer Park Elementary. So we'll have a total of fifty students, um, that will, will be taken to Washington, D.C. on, uh, starting tomorrow. So please keep us in your prayers. Um, do you want to follow up with the?
Yes, I would like to follow up to say. This is, this, this endeavor, I commend you because to, just to the coaches and the, the parents and the fundraising, and there's so much commit, community donation.
Yes.
It is, it is phenomenal. So this is the good news coming from the Glades, South Bay, Belgrade, and Pahokee. And why is it good news? Because there are times we only hear something else. So when you get up in the morning and you're in at Rosenwald or wherever you live, uh, just think about the teachers, the executives, the administrators who have dedicated and they are volunteering to do this.
Yes, you're right.
And, and our children. So keep that in mind. We are not on the back road. We are what? Rising stars.
Amen.
And as we see our young people go to D.C., your future president, your future governor, Supreme Court Judge, just think, go beyond where you are. And I commend you. I don't know if I could do it now because back in the day, I went on one of those trips and it was, and we went on the train.
Oh, yeah.
They're flying out now. And how many days did it take us on the train?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours. I commend you. Let's, let's just be strong and remember, we're not on the back road. We are rising stars. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And with that said, with Rosenwald and the coaches and our, our oratorical contest, you have diamonds in your community that we need to support more, all right? And it could just be an encouraging word, and it could be a prayer, or it just could be have a good day. But our children are rising stars. Phoenix, yes, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yes, I do. And be safe.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, moving right along, finance report, Commissioner Barry.
Oh, yes, I make a motion. Where's my flip? Thank you so much. I move to accept the accounts payable report from December third, two thousand and twenty four, and January seventh, two thousand and twenty five. At those meetings, I asked to table those account payable reports. As I said, visit Mister Sodeman anytime. We had a workshop. We went through the process. So my motion is to approve December third, two thousand and twenty four, and January seventh, two thousand and twenty five. May I have a second? Thank you.
Okay, we have a sec, a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, can you call for the vote?
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Pope.
Yes.
Commissioner Barry.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McElvin.
Yes. So that's our finance report. Moving on, City Clerk's report.
Just real quickly, sir, you guys, we did a motion for December seventh, December third and December seventh?
No, December third and January seventh.
Okay. What about, oh, sorry, you're right. Okay. Palm Beach Day, uh, we have Palm Beach Day registration is complete for Palm Beach Day, March fourth through the fifth. NLC City Conference, March eighth through the twelfth, and all those registrations are complete for the City Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Madam Clerk, um, when is the travel day for Palm Beach County? Is it March the fourth or the third?
It's the fourth.
The fourth? Okay, thank you. The fourth, okay, thank you.
I must, uh, state now that I don't know if I'm gonna stay that whole, that duration, or maybe just one day. So, may I discuss that with you?
Yes, later.
The registration has been paid, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, City Manager Campbell?
Uh, Vice Mayor, Commissioner, during the, uh, workshop, I spoke about the CDDG and some of the things that are taking place here in DC at this moment.
Yes.
I also spoke about the possible, the Community Development Block Grant that's under attack, and the, there's germane to the city of South Bay, the one million dollar grant that was applied for, for the Towne Park Project. Hopefully, if the federal government approve a budget sometime February, February, March, or April, we would have positive movement with that one million dollars. Uh, doesn't mean that the dollars for the listening public, that if it's approved by the federal government in March or April, that the dollars are gonna come March or April. It's a process, um, at that point, with drafting the agreement, um, that could take upward to eight to nine months. So, it, we're, we're working along and we're tugging along, but those are some things I want to share based upon what's happening in DC at this time. Now, also, give an update, the Audit Selection Committee, they have a meeting, um, about two, two weeks ago. They are putting the bid, the bid is back on the street at this time, um, for the, for an audit auditor, for an auditor for the city of South Bay. So, that bid has been published, it is on the city's website, it is on Demandstar, it is being published in the newspaper, uh, we're hitting all the markets in order to get an auditor into the city per the Florida statute, uh, so that we're able to move forward. So, the Audit Selection Committee has been intimately involved in this process, and we are doing all that we have to do for notice, notification, and in line with public, with the, uh, with the public involvement. So, no other items regarding that, uh, regarding City Manager's report.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Manager, please note that I had, we had an opportu, I had an opportunity to meet with, uh, Jordan Connors?
Your lobby?
To discuss, yes, to discuss the, the plan for our local representatives. And would you just give us an, a status update on where we are at the state level, funding, how is that conversation, what is the tone? Three items?
At the state level, for each of our three items that's been submitted, we are, um, submitting the reports and the legislative appropriations request. We finalized the Senate reports today, with, excuse me, um, I sent over the information for Mr. Connors to finalize those Senate's report for submission, um, to Senator Berman's office, and those items will be able to move forward. The House items were submitted to Representative Meg Weinberger, who is our representative for the area approximately two weeks ago, and the Senate items are going to be just submitted, um, this week. So, we are tugging along, um, at the state level for our state appropriation request.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell, Commissioner Barry?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Polk?
Yes, uh, quick question, City Manager, uh, you, if you're, uh, able to give us an update on the upcoming road projects that we have in the city?
I, I sure, I sure can, sir. The most, the, the up, the, the very recent upcoming road project is Northwest Tenth Avenue. As, as the commission, I'll make the commission aware that we went out to bid in November, excuse me, October, November, twenty twenty four. The bids were submitted December, twenty twenty four. Engineering and, um, um, because this is a joint project with Palm Beach County, both did a engineering review of those bid and made a recommendation. In that time period, we also have to get concurrency from Board of Department of Transportation to move that project forward. Now, we are in February, Ja, late January, um, where we submitted the documentation over to the Florida Department of Transportation, January, twenty twenty five, where the information was submitted to Florida Department of Transportation. As we put a period in that, in that space, I need to take the commission back to, uh, August of twenty twenty four. City Manager and the engineer submitted a request for an extension to Florida Department of Transportation to extend the Northwest Tenth Avenue Agreement. We made that recommendation to DOT because the agreement was set to expire December thirty first, twenty twenty four. When we, when the bid analysis and bid concurrency was submitted to DOT in January of twenty twenty five, they, Florida Department of Transportation halted the project, project, and would not allow us to move forward with awarding the bid, which is why we never, we drafted the item. Uh, however, we could move forward with it. We could not, the city could not move forward with awarding the bid because we did not receive bid concurrency due to the contract, the agreement with FDOT expiring. During the snowstorm of February in Tallahassee, there was, there was some meetings scheduled that were canceled because the state was closed. However, a letter has been submitted, conversations have been held with the local statistic force staff for Florida Department of Transportation, and with the central staff in the secretary's office in Tallahassee. We are waiting, at this point here on February fourth, we are waiting on the secretary to give final approval to re-engage that agreement. That agreement has approximately eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars remaining. Um, because there's only eight hundred and seventy thousand, forty thousand was used for engineering and design work. It has approximately eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars remaining for the construction of Northwest Tenth Avenue. The moment we receive authorization or new agreement from Florida Department of Transportation to utilize the eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, we can award the bid to the, uh, the reasonable, responsible bidder on that project for the construction, reconstruction of Northwest Tenth Avenue. Our goal, the city, um, staff has been working diligently with the Department of Transportation to award that bid, I mean, excuse me, to get that agreement back in hand, so we are able to award that bid, and can sus, and construction can begin, um, no later, well, hopefully, April of twenty twenty five. And I'm able to say, I wanna say April, twenty twenty five, because I firmly believe that by March, at our March meeting, we should be able to bring, um, a new agreement from Florida Department of Transportation along with awarding the bid to the reasonable, responsible bidder, um, for the construction, reconstruction of Northwest Tenth Avenue.
Thank you for that update, uh, Mr. Manager, and appreciate that, uh, uh, staff doing all they can to get this done for us. Um, did you have any further projects you were going to, going to?
Yes, sir, the Northwest First Street Project and the Northwest Twelfth Avenue Project. I know residents, um, that's in the building and commission, you may have seen some stripes and colors painting in the roadway. August, for the August, September of twenty twenty four, you awarded an agreement to Arduer Group for engineering and design work on that roadway project. Arduer Group has, uh, surveyors, geotech engineers out doing the, doing some work for that roadway project to be reconstructed. There is funding from Florida Department of Transportation currently underway for Northwest First Street. This submission has also set aside funding, um, in your capital improvement budget for Northwest Twelfth Avenue. Once the Arduer Group complete the design of Northwest First and Northwest Twelfth, they would do the design work, get it approved by Florida Department of Transportation, and then we will bid, the project will be bidded. So, the goal is somewhere in the time period of twenty twenty six for construction to be underway for that roadway project. Considering our current position with Northwest Tenth Avenue, we are also asking for extensions on Northwest First Street. We are paying closer attention, excuse me, we're not asking for extensions, we are paying closer attention, so if an extension is needed for Northwest First Street, we will do that as well, um, considering the funding is in place from Department of Transportation for that roadway project. So, you have Northwest Twelfth Avenue, Northwest First Street being designed for roadway project, reconstructed, being designed for reconstruction. Northwest Tenth Avenue, that project is, um, well, it was yet somewhat funded, but we do have a contractor on board, not under agreement, but they have, um, accepted the bid, and they are aware of the hundred and twenty day notice within the bid, and they've accepted that, so we are able to move forward with them as long as we keep the project moving with, excuse me, with Florida Department of Transportation. Also, you have in the appropriations request, Southwest Eleventh Avenue, that is Southwest Eleventh Avenue as part of the appropriation request, um, for this upcoming legislative session.
Mr. Ma?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I feel an urgent need to have some workshops, to workshop the update on our infrastructure. And the reason I'm asking for the update, just a workshop, thirty minutes, at our next commission meeting, that could be a future agenda item, why? Because I'm looking at this in bits and pieces, I would like to see this puzzle come together, the funding aspect. Set aside, go ahead, continue.
Now, I, I, I had a short conversation with City Manager about a workshop for the road, so we can't.
And that's a wonderful thing, because, see, we don't talk, you know, I mean.
Right.
We, we don't talk commissioners, so I'm putting it out in the open.
Yes, a little further down the road, so he can have time to get past this, uh.
Now.
Uh, Secretary of Finance with, uh, so he can have a, a more accurate update for us.
I think I need something immediate, because I need something in March, consider March or April. What would you think, April? April would be good workshops, because you have a, a chance to go to Tallahassee, meet with the legislators, and see the status, and so April, so for a future agenda item, we will have a workshop on all of our infrastructure, Mr. Sodeman will deal with the budget, we'll see the percentage going where, and the plan for the future, because, uh, uh, we can do this, we can do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I'll follow up and make sure that we get on the futures and items.
Excellent, so make a motion.
Commissioner Barry and, uh, Vice Mayor, through the Vice Mayor, through the Chair, if at all possible, um, I think considering we have set aside, I, in our workshop, we do thirty minutes, and we have a more in-depth conversation, um, at a later date, and possibly schedule a town hall meeting, but I know that is, I, I think we may reach more residents, but if you do a workshop, a workshop could be of just that, and we are having that conversation, um, with the commission and to prepare for a, a public conversation, uh, with the, with the residents. But I would, I'm more comfortable if we, let, let us have individual conversations regarding, um, and, and I'm, I'm cautious when I say individual conversation, let us just talk so we're able to plan appropriately to present something, uh, to the general public, and have all of those items together from a project status update on our, uh, in, uh, infrastructure project status update, and a future funding conversation as well. So, I think it can be a more comprehensive approach to what this commission may have a desire to do in concert with, uh, the, the city staff, with staff.
I understand.
I totally agree, City Manager.
We are in agreement.
Thank you.
Yes.
For April, town hall meeting on infrastructure, is that correct? That's the direction?
And if we, i, i, well, well, let's do this, Commissioner, before you say April, we can work towards April, that's not, that's not my, that's not what I'm trying to caution, I want us to have a conversation, but what is needed may take us a little longer to present to the general public in A, than April. So, I would, I would prefer us to just, at the upcoming commission meeting, I will get with the person, see what's on the agenda, uh, for our February eighteenth workshop, and we, if it's not a loaded agenda, because I, right now, I don't know, then we could have that conversation at that meeting on the eighteenth, if it's not a loaded workshop, then six thirty, so we can pop, properly prepare for a town hall meeting with the, um, everyone and the general public that typically doesn't come out to our commission meeting.
Right, sounds good to me.
Just put a, a, a solid plan together, um, so we can properly inform and educate the, your constituents and the residents of South Bay.
Thank you, City Manager Campbell. Any other, um, questions for the City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Manager. Vice Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Commissioner Barry?
Mr. Manager, regarding the technical assistance, uh, grant proposal through Unicus, would you provide an update on the status of our technical assistance, um, initiative?
There is a, an existing grant underway, approximately ninety-five thousand dollars that we have with, um, Florida Department, Florida Commerce, now, excuse me, with Florida Commerce, as we are preparing and doing additional data, um, filling the information to roll out our museum and strategic planning steps. I don't have the full status in front of me at the moment, however, I can say that Unicus is moving forward.
Yes.
In, in that same tone, we, the city of South Bay did not receive funding for the next phase. So, we're working off the ninety-five thousand, however, we did not receive funding for the next phase. Considering that we did not receive funding, City Manager was also preparing, this was during the snow in Tallahassee, that meeting was also canceled at Florida Commerce to re-engage with the Deputy Secretary. at Florida Commerce to reengage with the Deputy Secretary, um, a, a funding request for the next phase, um, of our strategic planning and museum planning process. Again, that meeting did not happen as well, so we are typically, we are at a standstill. The staffing, excuse me, the agency heads have not rescheduled those meetings at this moment, considering what's taking place in Tallahassee from the Governor's Mansion, from the, um, executive branch. So those meetings have not been, um, rescheduled at this time, so I'm unable to provide any further updates for additional funding from the, uh, from that office.
I heard that. So what am I going to do now?
Thank you for that update, City Manager Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barry? All right, moving right along, do we have any more questions for the City Manager? From the panel? Moving along. City Attorney Report. A report from the City Attorney, okay, moving along, future agenda items. We have any future agenda items at this time?
The eighteen.
The eighteen?
We'll do that at eighteen.
Thank you.
No future den- agenda items tonight. Um, all right, moving right along, Commissioner Good, comment for the Good Order, Commissioner King?
Uh, thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Just wanted, um, to take the time out to thank everybody for coming out tonight, taking part in your city business. That's it. Um, glad to see you. Um, continue to come out and support your city government, and know that I love you, and love make the world go round. Have a beautiful night.
Thank you, Commissioner King, Commissioner Pope?
Yes, sir, thank you, Vice Mayor, and great job, Vice Mayor, tonight. And, uh,
Thank you.
Just, uh, wanted to give a shout out to the Mayor, uh, Mayor Kyle's, and, uh, thank, uh, the manager for those, uh, that beautiful report tonight on those roads. Um, shout out to the Vice Mayor, Bellglay, good friend, very active, and, uh, has a lot of relatives that live here in South Bay, so, uh, we appreciate, make sure you let them know we're working. We're working for them. I just want to give a shout out, I don't have, Vice Mayor, you may know more of the names, but I only recorded the names. Uh, the, the one from Rosenwall, Ms. Jamie Perez, she received the, uh, Palm Beach County School Board Employee, School Related Employee of the Year, and so I just want to congratulate her.
Yeah, she was, um, she was nominated. She didn't, she didn't actually win it, but she was nominated.
One of the nominees.
Yeah, yeah, she was one of the nominees.
It's an honor still.
I mean, that's still a-
Still an honor.
Yeah, still an honor, yeah, that is still an honor.
Yes, it is.
And so, uh, wanted to give her a shout out for that, and also just want to say to everyone, have a wonderful night. Let's continue to do what we do, uh, let's enjoy, good evening to you, love you, man, everyone, God bless you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Pope, Commissioner Barry?
Thank you so much, uh, have a pleasant evening and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Barry. Thank you all for coming out tonight, um. Obviously, do we have any report from the Sheriff Department? What about the Fire, Fire EMS? Thank you, thank you for coming out. I just want to thank all the residents for coming out tonight and joining us in our local government. Um, again, just please, please continue to pray for us as we travel to Washington DC tomorrow, that we would travel there safely and also return safely back home with our families. On that note, I would like to say, have a great night, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Thank you. Well, thank you so much.